See the chairs and?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah. They're on the main website.
So how long is it?
A couple of weeks.
Is that cool? Yeah. I think so.
So which one is it?
We'll call this meeting to order. This is a work session of the Mayor of Borough Council, the Borough Seaside Park County Vote and State of New Jersey, held on Thursday, June 8th, 2023 at 7:00 P. M. Pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice of the meeting for publication in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger on January 4th, 2023. Notice of the meeting of the governing body has been posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the municipal clerk. Roll call.
Councilmember Amabile.
Here.
Councilmember Cobos.
Here.
Councilmember Kraft.
Here.
Councilmember Wolf.
Here.
Councilmember Dr. McHugh.
I believe he's on it. I saw him today.
Thank you. Council President DeMichael.
Yep.
Matt Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
The first item is for informational purposes only, and I know everyone, you get blurry, there's three hundred some pages.
Quite definitely.
That came, JCPenney had made this application for what is described as an X-50 cable replacement, which entails digging a trench under the bay and quite disruption of the bay floor. It's a project for which they sought an individual permit as well as a GP-12 permit. This application came on the agenda before the planning board, and the board had a number of questions originally, and those were addressed in an October 31st, 2022 letter from the board engineer Douglas Romeyer. And some of those concerns were highlighted, and they entailed the fact that there was apparently no documented eelgrass habitat study. There was either an inadequate or it had never been shared of what kind of a plan was established for this disruption of the bay, the potential for disturbance of eelgrass beds in the Borough Seaside Park and in the bay floor of Barnegat Bay. This is a trenching project undergoing. Also, we raised issues as to the town concerning the fact that the, this is an active boat ramp and an active municipal park where the utility line would come in, and we asked from the planning board's perspective if there could be parameters for the actual project only to be dealt during the months when we're not in full operation as a municipality. And there were some issues raised at the board level. We talked about that we even went further than the letter. It's a very comprehensive letter from Mr. Romeyer. It was really to start a dialogue, ask for some answers from, this went to the D E P. And some of the issues that came up during our discussion in the planning board level also entails the fact that this level of substantial disruption of the bay floor, the sand, the sediment, could have a deleterious effect, not just on raising the sediment level, but if there are contaminants that are in the bay, and those could include anything from the former Ocean County Utilities Pipeline, the sea buid situation, any and all of those. So we asked a whole number of questions, and we did not receive a response from the D E P. As such, this came before the town again. We got a notice very recently, and I had written a letter to the D E P with a copy of Mr. Romeyer's letter, and I've had a sit-down meeting with Mr. Romeyer about the issues. My letter went out June 2nd, 2003, and I suppose it's a coincidence, June 5th, 2023, the D E P issued a permit. So we have that, and Mr. Romeyer is aware of this. There is also a GP-12, a general permit, that's still outstanding before the D E P got this application, but the D E P has issued this permit, and that came in our package as well. And the other aspect of the application, and it's somewhat complicated, and Mr. Romeyer indicated that they withdrew their application before the town.
May 31st.
Yeah, and that, so there's two permits here. That's what we're, what Doug explained, and he's on it, and I spoke with him. He's obviously our special project engineer for the governing body. He also serves as the planning board engineer, and this is something I think that's so important that the governing body has willingly accepted all of his help. He's looking at it, and I think he'll give us whatever results. He's following up. He has an action plan, but he's asking the D E P to give him some information as well. He's got the people who were copied, and he indicates also, prior to the actual dredging, even of the one permit that they have, JCPenney obtained, they would still have to apply to the Army Corps of Engineers. And so that, that process is ahead of them. Obviously, there are public--
And they gotta go through the same toll gates that we have to.
Time will tell. We don't know.
Who knows?
But it's obviously something that's very important for us and Seaside Park, very important for the bay, and the disruption alone is something to be concerned about. So he's looking at it. He has a complete file as well. So it's just really on the agenda for everyone's informational purposes. I know it's three hundred pages, but. He also gave some background, if anybody can share it, I'm sure he would as well, of how you can follow all the documents that they have submitted. There are a whole number of other ones, and you go on the data mining website of the D E P, and you get more and more into it, and you can see some of the nature of the application and what gaps, questions may remain, and what may have been answered in part. I don't know anybody, it's just, it's really here for information purposes.
I think it's for information.
Yeah, I mean, there's still, at some point, he believes are going to ask for our consent, and he didn't know whether or not Berkeley Township had given their consent. He wasn't privy to that. They had to give consent too. And it's also joins a private landowner, right, joining our upwards and avenue. That's privately owned, so they would be involved in some way. They own repairing rights that found. Anything else at this juncture? The next item is discussion of authorizing approval for T and M Associates to submit a grant application and to execute a grant contract for New Jersey Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2024 NJ DOT Municipal Aid Improvements. It's for Stockton Avenue Project. It's on as Resolution 2023-177 for consideration on the regular meeting agenda tonight. So I don't know if that--
So just one of the DOT grant opportunities that come along every year that we've utilized to improve number streets in town. 12th Avenue, 13th Avenue, we have one, two of them, to run together down in South Ave. H Street, G Street. We've used them throughout and around town, and we usually pick it by one that would, the project may fit within the guideline, within the amounts generally awarded with these. I mean, it's usually $350,000 to $500,000 a year for us. I mean, different towns get different amounts, but. So this project from, appears to be, according to Public Works and Water and Sewer Guy, seems to be the street most at need that would fit within the parameters we're looking for, so that's why this street was picked.
No, I certainly thank the committee and thank the engineers offices. There's been a very high success rate with these grants over recent times, so hopefully this one will yield the same result.
Did I understand correctly that they're gonna raise the roadway a couple inches and the crown perhaps? Going to try to do that, yeah, and try to correct the under. The, yeah, that water and sewer system were, that was replaced as in phase two. However, the state, when Sandy came in, had some of the feed for their pumping or stormwater drainage or something under there. It's a kind of a bleak-looking pipe, and now it fills up and just kind of seeps into the street. It's just, it's not a good situation, so that'll be part of it as well, Bill, in addition to raising it a little, you know, and that area is pretty high too, so you have a, you have the advantage of being able to create some sort of pitch there, you know, as opposed to like 12th Avenue. And that's purpose of that, and that's being, it's just approval for them to submit this application.
Great. Anything else from council on this one? Thank you. Item C is authorizing social affairs permit submitted by Ocean County St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee for Events, Boots on the Bay Sunset Food Truck Event and the 125th Anniversary Parade Town Fair. Those are on as Resolutions 173, 174 for this evening's meeting, and that entails the ongoing celebration, the series of events for the 125th Anniversary, and the St. Patrick's Day people are actually submitting the application for the food truck event and as well as the town fair with respect to beer truck, and I think there's beer and wine and the--
Yes.
Other, the sunset, sunset event.
I guess both around the Marina lawn.
Anything further on that one? And item D is continued discussion from March 23rd work session, additional recommendations from Public Safety Committee concerning new ordinance for parking restrictions in municipal parking lots, J Street, N Street, and Borough Hall.
So we did meet mayor last week. Several of the items coming up. The parking lots referenced were J Street, N Street, Borough Hall, and in the past few years, we've had multiple issues with people parking after hours on the weekend and no really mechanism for the police department to, you know, fine and ticket. So we discussed amending the code to have the N Street lot accessible to employees only between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., and thereafter it would be restricted parking. J Street lot would have no parking allowed except during permitted municipal events. That includes Tri-Borough as well, so that anybody parking there, resident parking or other parking, would be prohibited. That would, again, give them the ability to ticket. And Borough Hall, of course, between 8:00 and 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday during normal business hours, and we see, we see, I guess, and saw in the past few years, you know, boardwalk and people going up there, parking there on weekends and after hours as well. So those are the recommendations we made to address those municipal lots, and we're gonna ask you to just kind of incorporate that into our ordinance.
And any--
Yes, is that right?
Any questions, comments on that?
Mr. Chair, can we discuss parking on the street with trailers or?
That's coming up on the next--
Oh, I have time.
There's three, there's three items that we discussed.
Okay, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
And I'm not clear on the, what's the discussion or recommendation as to the J Street area?
So J Street would be that there's no parking allowed unless there's a permitted or authorized municipal event, which would include Tri-Borough as well, whether it's bingo night or any types of events. So that's generally used right now for what I would say is seaside park events or Tri-Borough events. So we would know when those events are occurring. So outside of those natural events, there would be no need for residents to be parking there.
Is there an issue now that people brought up about J Street?
Yeah, there's probably a couple of cars right parked there right now. That should not be there, absolutely. It was brought up a number of times.
Playing, whether it's devil's advocate, what would, how would be the mechanism? What would happen in terms of, say, Tri-Borough has people setting up there for events, working there--
Where you would know there's an--
Volunteering?
How do you know?
It was a tough call because the only time that that lot really is used is if it's a Tri-Borough event or something that's going on within the bar. You wanna--
Yeah.
It was a tough one for all of us, but--
You know, we had Election Day the other day.
Right.
Lot was being used. We, the town had a breakfast a few weeks ago--
Oh, you're aware of that.
--of course, so I don't know how you write it into a new ordinance.
Well, I mean, those things, we kind of assume, we know that they're happening. Like I said, if you go there right now, I can guarantee you there's two cars there. We know nothing's happening. It's pretty clear that they shouldn't be parking there. I mean, I'm just gonna be straight forward about it.
So do people who are volunteers at Tri-Borough have some kind of placard that you would know? Because I'm assuming they could be there at any time they want to be there. Are you saying they can't use it at all?
No, they don't use that lot unless they're, it's bingo night or there's an event going on or what happened, which of course the bank does as well. Well, what would you--
Well, I'm just asking. I'm just saying, like, when you say they have their own--
One to the left, and hats.
Okay, and so you wouldn't want them over there even though they're volunteer, like, I mean, what would be the--
There's an event going on there, so we would know there's an event going on. The police would obviously know there's an event going on there.
Would someone, would someone have to then get a use of facilities permit?
You know, this was a tough one because there's times when there are residents and people who are parking there. It's clear that they're not supposed to be there. It's clear there's no event going on there. It's clear the Tri-Borough is not hosting an event. So it was a tough one to restrict hours because that lot's used periodically at different times for different things. So that's kind of how we came up with the way to order, was that if there was a public event going on, municipal event going on, it's pretty clear to the police department and everybody else that that's happening. The Tri-Borough is having an event, it's clear it's happening. Election, it's clear it's happening. I'll take a ride by there right now, and I guarantee you there's two cars parked there in that lot, and nothing's happening.
So is it, I guess, a repeat offender that is always there?
Yes, exactly.
That we should just address the repeat offender as opposed to a blanket new--
Yes, I initially proposed that, and there was no way to engage without some type of an ordinance or something that would allow the police department to enforce that. So this is the language that kind of seems to only work, because there was no other way to render. I mean, I don't know other way to explain that, but, I mean, the chief has a recommendation or anybody else--
I think there's peak times also in the summer where it's utilized to go to the beach, which is not a sanctioned event for the borough.
It's a very difficult way to put an hourly timeframe on that.
You know, everybody knows when the events are at Tri-Borough.
Yeah, I'm not questioning the events. I'm not doubting on that time.
Do you know where anybody wants to-- You see two cars in there? You see two cars in there?
The fence will often close it.
And then when you open up that J Street building that we're renovating, you would modify it then if there were people there? Because that's supposed to just be a town recreational, the supposed Boy Scout building?
Yeah, but that would be covered under that.
Okay, so someone would always have to know when there was an event. The police department would always have to know whenever someone was approved to be there.
Right, but if you had an event going on in that building, let's just say--
I thought it was just those people could go and, right, like cars.
It would be scheduled, it would be known, and they would be very well aware that that was going on. I think that--
I wish we wanted to--
Only--
No overnight parking.
The only thing I could think of is make it the same restrictions as the 14th Avenue block, you know, where the boat ramp is.
What's the language for that?
What's the language for that? I don't know.
I was, I was gonna say--
It's an hour. I think it's from midnight to five or something. These guys will stop talking, and you might be able to hear. Jim, do you recall what the 14th Avenue hours are of when parking isn't allowed?
There is this later, I forget if it's 12:00 a.m. or 2:00 a.m. because of the--
Let's speak up, chief.
12:00 to, I believe, it's 2:00 a.m., my thought is like 5:00.
For opening up, yeah, for opening up.
So like 12:00 to 5:00 is what 14th parking lot is right now?
That's Lot 4. That's considered Lot 4.
Yeah, okay, well--
So this is also a public parking lot. I mean, how do we want to address--
Well, it's actually not a parking lot.
Is the question. It is. It really is.
It's a municipal--
It's a municipal owned, it's a municipal owns--
Well, it is a lot.
Lot used for parking.
And it has no other purpose.
All right, well, the language, the language is the snag, because you got a couple of different--
They call J Street a new, a new lot. Lot 5.
I'm open, I, this was just what came out of the meeting, so it's not my personal decision.
No, I'm not. I'm just asking for clarity.
We're trying--
Well, it's tough, because this is, there's multiple, multiple uses that take place in and around that, that block. So, I mean, how do you regulate something like that? It's kind of hard. I mean--
That's the problem, is the enforcement is wrong.
Right, so that's the, that's the challenge. How do you allow the ability to enforce that? I don't know. Steve, any suggestions? I mean, we struggled with it as well, so--
I just went to Google Maps, there's your two cars.
I know, I know.
There they are.
I know, I know. And there's sometimes a couple, actually. It's not--
Try, right.
I took my phone. I took my phone. There they are.
No, I know.
They live in the house over there.
Okay, well, you have to decide, are you gonna put the sign municipal or Tri-Borough purposes only?
But it's not really just--
But we didn't want to eliminate the idea that the Tri-Borough uses that, of course, because it's obvious we've always had that use for them, it's there, so that was, we did not want to not make sure that that was clear, that that's a use that we will continue.
For municipal activities?
I mean, here's the thing, so, all right--
Let's just table that one maybe in--
All right, we can't, because if there's no way to do it, then what are you gonna do? You're gonna select, we deal with the next problem. You can say, okay, just go park the clothes and trailers in that lot too? Because there's no enforcement, I mean, let's get real.
I think, I think we should dispense it.
Either you can enforce it in some way or another, or you don't, and if you don't--
I think we should dispense it.
It becomes a bigger--
Put a roof over the front of it? Put a roof on it?
Date it.
I'm fine with that, and then you open it when it's in a--
No, no, just the back.
No, I'm saying, oh, I brought that up in the first place.
Yes, I'll just say that.
But there was a resistance to that, I'll just leave it at that, and I brought up just approaching the people directly, and, you know, I brought that up, so just so it was, that was my initial approach, and it did not go over, so.
I did, I don't, we know what that's at the meeting I was at. Suggestion.
All right, I'm open, like I said, I'm open to whatever you guys think, but in the meantime, you want to address the other ones?
Well, can we resolve this one? We gonna put a fence up? So where are you putting a fence?
It's gonna be like a, probably a post with a chain or--
No, not in front.
No, there's a fence in the back that would cut off any access to pass through the property.
Oh. Oh.
Can that be, that be a deterrent?
I said, I'm open to whatever.
Because I believe, we brought it up before, I'm very much in favor of it. I think everyone talked favorably about a proposal to move ahead with the handicap ramp and to make that an open-type community center where--
That's what my idea was about, where you could play cards.
So how, how could that, that's a public availability, that's what we're contemplating doing. Open for the public.
No, I agree. But doesn't mean that everybody in the neighborhood parks their car there overnight, because they can't find a spot on the street. There's a big difference between the two items.
You could do that, you could strip the hours.
The bottom line was, there was no way for them to enforce that, and so that was the contemplation that we were up against, is how do you create an enforceability on those people that are using that lot outside of exactly what you're talking about?
No, 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 parking of municipal property, no parking between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m.
All right, whatever.
Midnight. Yeah.
I don't, I'm like I said--
That's, I mean, that sounds like a, that's a solution right there.
I just, I think we would have to consult fully with the first aid. I don't want to jeopardize their own, their volunteers and their operations.
Nobody will hassle, man.
Yeah, that's why I specifically set up--
Well, you can't, it's not a hassle, though. You're not saying it's a hassle, you're saying it would, somebody would have to know who owned every car.
They do.
But they don't know who's a volunteer--
This guy's not one of the fire department, is he? I mean--
How can you know everybody who volunteered? Do you know every volunteer's car?
Yeah.
Chief?
Probably just me, though.
Huh?
Probably just me, because I'm a member of the--
Wow, you're good.
Still.
But they're not, they're not parking over there regularly unless there's an event going on and they're opening up spaces for other things or other people, so it's kind of, it's not all the time, like generally that lot isn't used unless there's an event, unless it's bingo night, unless there's a breakfast. So.
All right, well-- About municipal property, no parking between the hours of 2:00 and 12:00, midnight and 6:00 a.m. I'll make that motion.
Excuse me, doctor, that won't stop people from going to the beach, parking there. Just to park during the day.
Well--
What bad thing happened? What bad thing happened?
I was gonna say, that really hasn't come up too much, if I don't think, but it seems to be the repeaters that are constantly there because there's been no, you know, checks. It's up to all you, anyway, that was, that was, that was what we came up with, discussing it, but that was the only way.
We have to work on that, Mr. President.
So what do you want to do? You want to leave all the rest--
Where are we going with this thing?
You want to leave that one alone and just address the other properties that we can establish how hours that makes sense?
We have to have an answer to this problem, or, you know, you just can't kick it down the road, or we can't do that.
You can.
You can.
I think we agreed on N Street, didn't we?
You did.
Didn't we agree on N Street?
Yeah, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. is employees only, after 6:00 p.m. until the following day, no parking at all. Great, right.
We want to, we could put, we could add that to this, too.
You need to go in there or not?
I go in the right lot with action.
Sure.
I do.
Well, I'm pretty sure that they're all gonna know exactly who you are. It's open for, so--
And we'll say except for--
The hours of parking are for employees only, and those are between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. And then it's not for public use at all, because what you see there in the, in Borough Hall and even last weekend and other things, people just bark there.
Right, but if I go into my office at 9:00, which I do, believe it or not, I'm a weirdo.
Well, I think everybody's jealous, don't, don't you believe everyone's gonna know what you--
I hope so.
We also talked about just calling the police--
You just let them know I'm in for an hour? I mean, like, it's not, it's not, you know, I don't, I don't think that, it's even like if any of us go to Borough Hall on the weekend, for the most part, they're gonna know who we are. They'll read our plate, they'll know it's me, they'll know it's you, or they'll call and say, I'm gonna be here for an hour. Don't mind me, I'm just doing some work in the office. I mean, that's pretty simple, right? I mean, I don't know.
Could you call the, could Joe call the, the police department and say, I'll be in the lot? And they'll know.
The laws apply to everybody equally, okay? So if you're gonna create prohibition of parking in a municipal lot, and you want an exemption, you better put the exemption in the ordinance. It's that simple.
We'll put the exemption--
No one, no one is excused from violating the law, right? Whether you're a council person, whether you're the borough attorney, whoever you are. I'm just saying, so you can't say we're gonna prohibit parking, but hey, if Joe's there, that's okay, or I'm running in, I'm the mayor for two hours, that's okay. You would have to exempt those persons that you want to be able to park there as an exception. I'm just saying.
All right, so that--
You can't, you can't randomly enforce the law the way you want. An ordinance is an ordinance, and the law is the law. So you gotta, you gotta be careful with how you're gonna do this in terms of, if you're gonna make a prohibition, you better have an exception in there if you want so, anyone-- anyone to be able to park there. You put the positions. Just throw that out there, that's all. You can't have selective enforcement.
Well, that would be limited to probably four people, I mean, how many people would really be taken?
It'd have to be borough employees.
Borough employees.
Whatever exception, whatever exception you make up.
Right, elected officials.
Yeah.
That's right.
No.
I think it's very complicated, and that's why I asked before about like, like, you know, like, on, I'm just going to use as example college campuses or something, and you have a permit that's placed in your car, some kind of a placard.
Well, that's part of the whole comprehensive parking thing in this.
No, I personally admit that this is like, unless somebody was telling me that there was a massive problem, I think we're creating more work than it's worth because I don't see that this is a major problem, other than you're saying there's a single repeat offender in one lot.
Well, the other lot's not only throughout the whole summer for many years, and well, all of us who've paid attention to it have seen that on the weekends, on nights, on evenings, Borough Hall, absolutely, there's been parking there, even on Sundays during the day, there were times of Borough Hall, and Tim will attest to this, Borough Hall had like five or six cars parked there. People going to the beach. Absolutely. Right? Am I right?
Yes, you are right, because I've seen it.
No, I mean, it's not, you know, I'm not making it up.
I've seen it.
For borough business only.
Right.
That's what it says up there now.
Can I do it?
Note the Borough Hall, that would be easier, their business.
I think those lots, those spaces are marked for borough business on the street there.
Well, they say for certain hours, then after hours, there's a number on the street that you pay in the kiosk for them, so I don't know that that's the issue, the ones that say it out on the street. You're talking about behind the little wooden corral.
The front and the parking lot that we all generally.
There's a few cars in there.
So what, I mean.
There's a few cars in there, actually.
You can fit like five or six cars in there.
Oh, man.
And then the front, you have a few spots, and then there's a little tuck around the side spot. Now, listen, it's never been like a full lot, don't get me wrong, but there have been multiple times over the weekends where that lot has four or five plus cars in there.
They park in the side, we can't see them.
You're right.
Parking in the back and around the side, as you drive by, you can't, you don't know they're parking in there.
And there is a sign that says municipal parking only, blah, 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 but again, there's no way for you to enforce that, is that correct? I mean, that was, that was the recommendation that we had asked to be brought to our attention, and how do we address it? We need to put something in an ordinance form to allow the enforcement to take place. So that's what we're going with.
So where are we going from here?
Maybe the council's got it, is that what we want to do? If you can put that in the ordinance, you know, borough business, so Joe goes there, it's just not going to.
I, I would not suggest borough business, it's way too vague, it's not specific. If you want someone to park there, it's got to be, say, borough employee, elected official, whatever it is, it is. But you can't just say borough business, that'll. Going to the beach is borough business. Yeah, it is, going to the beach.
Yeah, go on the beach, that's borough business.
That's what happens now.
All right.
I don't know if this is such a, look, you're talking about five parking spaces and people using it.
Probably 15, 20.
Nothing about that, it's Borough Hall.
And now, now behind the, you're talking about, no, we're talking about Borough Hall.
Yeah, that's what we moved to Borough Hall.
No, there was multiple, there was, there was three different.
Put a chain there.
Of course, there is.
Put a chain, of course.
I mean, a bad thing happens when they're there.
They put a yellow chain across. I don't think that was, the mark was plastic.
I know, but I'm just, just to not have anybody there during non-office hours so that the lot stays empty that you're worried about vandalism, like, what are we preventing by not having?
We're not giving people free ride, that should be paying for paid parking meters that are put in place as a specific means of bringing in revenue to maintain the borough.
So would, can I make a suggestion? If that's what you're worried about, number the spaces in the lot the same way you have them numbered on the street in those three spots that have the signs. If it's about the money, address the money. Well, you just said, so people don't park there.
You asked me what the difference was, and it's because people are taking advantage of not having to pay for parking.
I understand, I agree with you.
That's the reality, so it has nothing to do with it's about making money.
No, 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 I understand.
I'm telling you that you want an answer, and why are they there? It's because they're taking advantage of the opportunity to pay and not pay.
I, I hear you, I hear you, I know.
I don't want that lot filled just because it's open ended.
No, 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 I'm, I, I didn't say it like that.
Why should cars be parked all around that building where now, because of additional security issues, because now you have vehicles all around that building, when it should be a secure lot, it's the Borough Hall.
Okay, so those are two different things, you'd say, and I'm, I'm okay with it, I just want to ask for clarity.
I don't understand how all of this has become so ridiculous to me, because it's like, either you want to leave them open ended and let people park, or you don't. So if you want it open ended and you want to let people park wherever they want, hey, go for it, I'm good with that.
No, I don't want you to throw your hand up, I wanted to finish this, the question.
Well, it seems like there's like some problem with every one of these issues, so.
No, can I just finish my question?
Yeah.
So I asked, what, were there things that we were trying to prevent from that? So if we don't want anybody there, period, then yes, then you lock it up, and you say you can't come in after a certain hour, but that prevents anybody, including any of us who went to get your package there. But let me finish, let me just finish, because then you said, well, people park there to avoid paying. So my only, the only thing I said to you was, we could number those spots the same way we have the ones numbered in front of the building that have the signs that also say 9 to 4 during, conducting borough business. You don't have to pay then if you park there. Now, if it's a security thing, then that's different, then numbering spots doesn't help that. So I was just asking for clarity on what we're trying to prevent.
It's not about making money, it's about having a lot that the borough employees can use and come in and pick up things without having to.
So then you don't want it to be.
People, it has nothing to do with, let the borough feel something, taking up spots that could otherwise be used for us.
Okay, so then I think we go back to what Steve said, that, then you have to have a way of identifying that it's a borough.
Permitted parking only.
Permitted parking after.
You put up a sign, permitted parking only, and decide who gets permits.
Right, that was what I said originally, that's what I was trying to clarify, I wasn't dealing with you about.
When I was in West Virginia as the prosecutor, they have a lot that holds 100 cars, and they have 50 spaces designated for employees, they're numbered, it's permitted parking only, and each employee was assigned a space. You don't have to assign spaces. I'm just saying, the only way to do it, if you really want to do it, is permitted parking. We discussed that before, is whether you want to get involved with permitted parking. That's really the only way to do it. Sorry, permitted parking only, and who gets the permits and who'd be in your ordinance, who gets the permits.
How about like the chief said, there's a sign up there already, isn't there, it says employee parking only, something like that?
Yeah, it says it.
All right.
It says for borough business.
So, you could get a cheap chain and put it across there and just clip it, and people won't go in there unless if they have to, then you're going to clip it, go in there, park and get your pack, or whatever you need to do, or have a little meeting if we need to do it or something else. But otherwise, somebody violates it, I mean, I think that's it's strong enough to turn, frankly, from having people just pull in off the street and park there.
I think it would slow it down.
It would slow it down, I'm so sorry about that.
Slow it down, put some chain.
Do that through the PD, and it would take, we would have to do a resolution.
No, I don't think so.
I could just put a standing order.
There's already, yeah, there's already a sign, borough business only, whatever.
At the end of the day, we just.
There's any hours on the sign.
I didn't hear you, Jim.
I was asking if that could be done through the PD, and that's, we wouldn't have to do a.
Putting up a chain and stuff.
Just put out a standing order, because there's a lot of six, seven, whatever, time if you want.
Do that, do the other lot too?
You didn't hear, twelve, three of them?
We could do that, we could do the lot.
J Street.
We have a chain on our lot.
J Street.
We could just keep putting it up. We have every good chain on our lot already.
Is that N Street?
N Street.
Yeah, N Street has a chain.
Kind of sold right, party over, so we just put the chain back up.
Same kind, that's, that would be, I think, the easiest for us.
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to change anything, right?
I think you're right, sir.
And we don't have to change a thing. I mean. What? J Street too. You could do it on J Street too, if you want, but we have to make that a lot.
Could have been mentioned a month ago, we wouldn't have to go through a lot, that was, all these problems, but that's okay.
Well, we still have to designate it as a lot, right? If we're going to do that, like, it'd be Lot 5 or something.
The J Street lot?
Yeah, in order, because there's no sign up there or anything at this point, I don't think.
There's a little sign there, it says, no parking. I saw a Google map, isn't there a little sign, chief, on the post there?
Yeah, I think, no loading, but that was.
There's no parking?
Correct. It's a sign, but nothing behind it.
Right, but there's nothing behind it. Yeah, so we have to do that, that's all we have to do.
Maybe designate that as a public lot, as a municipal lot.
Yeah. How's that?
Lot 5, I said.
Lot 5.
Lot 5, make it Lot 5?
Lot 5, J Street.
Designate it as Lot 5.
Well, there's, I don't want to, I don't want to say.
14th Avenue is Lot 4?
Correct.
I don't know.
Uh, yeah, I don't know. I'm sort of thinking this, this is, I can't remember.
What, what can I?
Design any parking areas as municipal lots.
Listen, the attempt was to address the issues that were at hand, that's it.
We put up a chain for now, then we're good. Yeah, just put up the chain.
Yeah, I think it'll slow it down, you're right, I can slow it down. See, people see the chain, they won't go in, some people won't. That's a police enforcement thing, I don't think you'd raise a resolution.
That's the official word.
On this one, then?
Yeah, we killed it. We murdered it.
That was only one part.
The next is recommendation from Public Safety Committee concerning prohibiting trailers on all roadways at all times and no impediments on sidewalks, amending chapter 43560, parking and storage restrictions.
All right, so this one has a multiple group of things, campers, trailers, boat trailers, there's been many complaints on these vehicles with trailers being parked on the street for long periods of time, there's been some RVs and tractor tra, not tractor trailers, like camping vehicles parked on the streets as well, there's been extension cords across the sidewalks, they've been parked improperly. The ordinance allows for overnight parking as long as they're attached to a vehicle from 8 p.m. to 6 a.m. This was an interesting one, because was there a time when there was absolutely none, I think it's labeled that way, was there a time when there was no trailers allowed at all?
Yes, there was.
I'm trying to go back in the history of this and try to figure out how the evolution of this kind of came to be. It seemed like there was a time, and I don't know, that's why I'm asking, some of you that have been around, that maybe they didn't allow that at all.
Yes, there was a time because I got, my son and my brother got several tickets in front of our house on 10th Avenue, just for the trail.
Okay.
Now, it was about 20 years ago.
Okay.
There was no trailers allowed whatsoever. You probably wrote the ticket. No offense, Jim.
Before 2017, the trailers had to be hooked to the vehicle all the time.
That's when that part came in?
Before 20, this was revised in 2017, but now you can be unattached from.
During the day.
During the day.
Right.
And what happened was, the old ordinance, they felt was too restrictive.
Right.
Somebody working on their boat, running out, get wax, get gas.
Right.
Instead of towing everything, unhook it, get their goods and come back.
Right.
But before that, it always had to be attached.
Right.
And before that, no trailers.
I don't, that's before my time with that.
Well, because I thought, it's a part of, I tried to ask, I was trying to ask different folks that maybe had been around longer, that I didn't have reference to that, and exactly what you said was that, you know, there were landscapers, there were people working on their boats, there was construction, they would leave the trailer unattached and it became a hazard, the wind can blow them, people would move them, and so they put in this, it's got to be attached overnight. But my thought, and this is why I was asking for some history on this, was that, that was with the intention that perhaps you were kind of two days, getting your boat ready to go in the water, doing work on your house, having landscaping, not, you know, long weeks, months, years, a short period of time reasonable for maintenance and the purposes of having whatever it is your trailer is carrying to take care of that part of it. So now, that, and then of course, there's been some RVs and other things, again, you've got electric cords, you've got hoses, I've seen them, we talked about this last year as well, some of them are covering the sidewalk, there's hazards to that, and so we came back and said, how do you enforce this? So we have this 8 p.m. to 6 a.m., specifically that it's supposed to be hitched to the bar and at least one chain connected to the vehicle. to the bar and at least one chain connected to the vehicle. So there's probably two portions of this, safety number one. Also, the insured trailer has to be attached to the vehicle for that insurance to be in effect. The majority, for all of us who probably go around and look, will see that none of them are actually attached to the trailer. They look like they are, they're made to look like they are, but they're really not. Some of them aren't even connected to vehicles that are really streetworthy. So the question is, what's reasonable and fair to the residents that are surrounded that are complaining? We've received numerous complaints, we actually just got an email recently that was pretty heartbreaking in a way. And what do you want to do and how do we want to address it? That's the question. And I think that the history of it not being allowed was probably many years ago, but when we have parking issues on the street, you could see where certain times, one boat, one trailer, whatever it may be, could be taking up two or three spots. And we have parking issues to begin with. So the question is, how do you want to address it? And what is the second, what's the suggestion? Is the overnight reasonable? Or should it be limited to, you have so many days to do whatever it is the function is, that you're utilizing the trailer, the boat, or whatever, maintenance? And I'm not really sure, so I cut it off.
We have to work on a settlement that these trailers can't be there on infinitum. And that's what it seems like they're there, on infinitum. And I'm getting several complaints, you see the pictures, council, people dropping them from my house.
No, I got-
And my charming wife said, it goes with the territory. Hey, what am I gonna do about this? Looks like, it looks like we're in West Virginia here. So, and then one person tells me, one person-
People, please don't fall from the audience, so I have a chance to comment.
I think the fairest thing to do is, no trailers from eight at night to eight in the morning allowed on Seaside Park. So the guy who's coming with the landscaper, he could drop his trailer off and work during the day, but he has no reason to be there at eight o'clock at night. Nobody should be working on their boat eight o'clock at night. So, after eight o'clock at night, no trailers on the-
What's he gonna do with the boat?
What?
What's he gonna do with the boat at eight o'clock at night? Was he gonna take it? It's in front of the-
Put it somewhere. Put it somewheres. Then you, you want boats all on the street? Because that's what happened.
Well, yeah, vacation, you have the vacationers coming down.
That's what happened. That's the nature-
They come with the boat and the trailer.
There's no, there's no actual, true solution. That's true. That's true. We have to work on something. You know, and I said, where I came from in South Orange, you weren't even allowed to park a car at night on the street. Not even a boat.
Those wouldn't be there in the morning.
That's possible.
Lose your tires.
That's possible. But that's possible.
Right.
But you weren't allowed to do it. So, we have to address this problem. I don't think we could leave a status quo. That anybody could put up is, oh, hey, I'll bring my boat in, I'll leave it on the street, I'll take two parking spaces, and I'll leave it there on infinitum. Because that's the order in Seaside Park.
That's a long time, right?
That's it. One boat's been there a long time.
Well, that was why, my question was to go back a little bit in history and kinda see the evolution of it, because I don't remember it being that way twenty-five years ago. I think houses are bigger, off-street parking is limited, and so, there is a function, there's something happening that's probably very normal. But was the intention of this overnight, you know, attaching it to the trailer with the thought that, okay, it's only gonna be for a day or two while you're doing your preparation to get the boat launched, or taking it out in the winter, or you're doing landscaping? That's why I posed it that way, because I think that, in my view, from the people I spoke to, that kinda was the way it worked, and there was a consideration for your neighbors and the parking, and it was just common sense. You didn't want to have a street filled with boats when there's limited parking, and you didn't want to have your neighbors looking at your boat. Our family has four boats, you've never seen one of our trailers ever. You still won't. They come out for an hour or two, maybe overnight once in a while if there's maintenance, gets launched, it gets moored, it gets put away, you don't see it. And so, I don't know, I'm asking, and my question is, what was the evolution of that? Is there something that changed? And was it restricted at one time where it was not allowed at all? If nobody has any reference to that.
I don't know.
Because I don't know that that's the answer. I'm just curious.
Maybe we need to do some investigation, also look at other towns.
Did you say there's a limited amount of time so that you can take care of business that you have to, and then clear the streets to be fair to everybody else and also allow for the normal parking, which is clearly an issue already? So that's my thought.
Have to do something.
And there is, there is stuff in here about, you know, campers and RVs and stuff like that, that really isn't forcible now. There should not be electric cords crossing sidewalks, there should not be hoses, they shouldn't be staying for the weekend and staying in the, whatever the case may be, there's places for that.
The ordinance already prohibits that.
Yes, well, I've been talking about it since last year, so I still see them.
Well, report it to the enforcement.
I have definitely done that.
Two zero zero dash fifty-nine prohibits that.
Well-
You can't live in your boat, your RV, whatever, and be on the street. Prohibited.
Shouldn't be on the street anyway regardless, if it's a certain size or whatever the case may be.
Correct. But it prohibited trailers. Doc, were you on the council in seventeen?
Yes.
So, I remember doing the ordinance, and I don't know if you remember, the biggest issue was, a lot of construction going on, people leaving their trailers overnight, and they were unhitched because the truck would pull away from the construction site, and you had this trailer there with heavy equipment on it, and all kinds of stuff on it, and it was like, wait a second.
And it's an insurance liability as well, because if it's not attached, it's not insured.
And so, I think the point was more that, I don't know so much it was about boats, to be honest with you.
There are two ordinances.
Yeah.
Right. Three ordinances.
Yeah.
Four thirty-five.
Right.
One dresses, one deals with, excuse me, one deals with boats, one deal, well, that's, that's, yeah, one deals with campers and RVs, and one deals with, like, semi, tractor-trailer kind of things.
Correct.
Or any commercial use, even box trucks, I believe.
Right. And this one was the unhitched trailer thing.
Right. Right. And there's no time limit on it, maybe that's the answer. I mean, that's what you said.
Right, there's no time limit, if it's hitched, there's no time limit on it.
Correct. Right.
That doesn't alleviate the complaints, though.
I'm just saying, that's the complaint.
Yes, correct.
So that's why, that's why I said, my thought initially was that that's something that just kinda came into play, and once this, this, you know, eight to six AM, as long as it's hitched, you're good to go, kinda gave the permission to think that, okay, we can just store them, and as long as, in the evening time, it's hitched and it's attached, you're good to go. And I don't think that that was the original way it would have been posed, maybe twenty years ago or whatever. I think it was restricted for a reason.
Trailers, more the construction stuff, there wasn't, I'm concerned about that.
Well, now, well, now it's, now it's kind of both.
That's been on there too.
Yeah, but I think there is some element to that as well that we're dealing with, so now, now the question is, what's fair, what's fair, and what's the way that we can enforce trying to limit it and be fair and balanced to every other resident who's not necessarily in favor of looking at that for weeks or months at a time? And would like to open up a street to additional parking for their family, their guests, their own uses, instead of, you know, taking up free spots.
So, correct me if I'm wrong. He's gonna be facetious. I would kind of be funny. I could, I could get a boat, put it on a trailer, hook it up, leave it in my house on infinitum. Right? I think that's, I think that's not right.
Your proper registration.
That's not, I think we should address it. I think we should address that.
Alright, so I'm just-
Actually, we need to, we should look at other towns, see.
I think we should address it. Well, maybe, well, maybe we'd like to hear from the audience, and that's where-
Yeah, that's good.
And then you bracket, there's seven other towns' ordinances.
Yeah, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna-
I think some council people need to talk to Doc just a minute.
Yeah, with that, we just got to make, that's the one you just gave us tonight that we never looked at.
Yeah.
I would like to have a chance to look at them, but I do agree with, I don't know who just said it about, if they're, if they are registered, and they're paying registration, and that's the way it is now, I, again, going back to what, you know, the issues that a lot of people have complained. I'd like to, you know, I think we have an obligation to quantify a lot of people, what that means. And I know you referenced a letter that made you upset, I'm not sure which one it was, but it was the same one I read, that the person called the town elite. I actually-
I don't know about that.
There was a letter that was sent to the council regarding the same topic, and he referred to, that he purchased in an elite town, and I don't feel that I live in an elite town, and if I wanted to live in something that was defined as elite, I might choose to live in a gated community that had all kinds of rules and regulations, and not in a family resort on a barrier island. That does have boats, and has jet skis, and has catamarans, and has the things that people come here to do. That's what they come here for. They don't come here to just sit and look at each other's properties.
That doesn't make an excuse that they can-
It's not an excuse.
To put the home on the front of your house and leave it there. That's, that's because it's not an elite town. Okay? It's not an elite town. But I'll put my home in front of my house, and I'll leave it there.
It was more than one, and yeah.
Okay, well, that's the only one I read. That's the only one that I've seen addressed since I've been sitting here since January.
But it wasn't, that was really kinda not the point that was really trying to be made.
Yeah, I think if you, I think if you-
And while I agree that, that's not what, I don't see, I understand your point. But for the one you're talking about, if somebody spent millions of dollars, and they've gotta look at an entire block and then some over and over again as their view of the ocean, I'd probably feel very similar.
You might.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, I forget about the adjective, I mean, you know, the intent, the ten of the letter wasn't, wasn't to slant anybody, or-
No, it was just the point.
It was just to try and make the point, and that's, in their own vernacular, whatever that may be.
Yeah.
But this is really a, it's, it's not the first time I've heard this. I've heard it many, many, many times, over many, many years, from many, many people. I don't want to quantify it, I don't know.
I was just bringing that up, same thing, quantifying how many violators at J Street lot.
Over twenty-five.
No, it's okay. So we're, that's modest.
Prohibiting street parking, but you're prohibiting parking on parks.
I didn't say that. I just thought because the way it was presented, that wasn't exactly what I was, that wasn't the way I wanted to word it, it was the way that it came out of one of the other sections of, there was another ordinance that absolutely said prohibited at all times.
Right.
And we were reviewing that. It was a different section, which I believe would have been dash sixty-five, where it says prohibited at all times on any street in Seaside Park. So that was one of the ordinance that didn't really relate to this. But that was where that language came from. And my approach is to be fair about how everybody felt about it, that it affects everyone.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I think I'd like to hear what the public says at the end.
Okay.
Because that's more important to me than anything else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else on this issue? If not, we've got discussion of repairs needed for fire department ladder truck.
Yes, actually, I have a fire chief here. The ladder truck is in need of some repairs, and we would like to, as far as, discuss that a little bit. I think there's money in their budget, and they're gonna sell one of our other vehicles to pay for that, but we'd like to support that and get that pumper truck, uh, ladder-
Needs a ladder truck fixed by, and reimbursed from selling the pumper truck once the new pumper truck comes in in May, June, June.
Right, but we wanna authorize that.
Did you get a price on that, Joe?
Yes, we do have.
Final, they come down on-
Take it apart first.
They're gonna, this is the one with all the, the gaskets of the hydraulics, right?
Right.
Oh. Did they, did they give you a firmer quote?
No, they can't until they check it apart.
Oh, I was, let's see it.
Okay, well, that's, there you go.
No, we don't know what, what is going to be needed to repair it until they actually take it apart.
They didn't say, I think we talked about, maybe asking, did that included all the joints and all the-
That's what they're gonna do.
Ah, yes.
That doesn't include replacing it all, though.
It includes the master cylinder.
Right.
All of them?
Yes. No, the one master cylinder. And they take it off, there's no setting that, anything else to be done on.
I thought this was kind of a-
They need a crane to take the entire ladder off the truck, get it to where the new boat is.
Then they gotta take it.
It's the master cylinder.
But they're gonna replace all this, all these fittings, and they're in there, so hopefully that'll work, right?
Hey, chief, do you have a ballpark figure what they want? They didn't give you anything. How much?
Twenty-three thousand is the initial quote.
It's in your pocket.
Twenty thousand?
Yeah, it's in here.
Yeah, it's in here. So nothing changed since the meeting that-
No, except that-
They cannot write a quote on what they don't know. And they don't know it until they open it up.
But we wanna make sure we do this ASAP, like what's-
Yeah.
Make sure it's in cab, what's important, let's make sure they have what they need.
And so, there is money in the fire department budget to cover the cost of this repair, provided it can be repaired. I mean, there's also the chance that they can get in there, take all this apart, and say, this can't be fixed. And then, it's, you know, we could have ostensibly spent twenty thousand dollars and get nothing out of it, but we don't know that until they take it apart. Am I correct, Val?
Yes.
Right.
So, excuse me, we have to do that, Val, we have to take it apart. We have no choice.
We only have one ladder truck, and we need a ladder truck.
We have no choice.
No one's over a million, so.
Three and a half, and it takes three years to get it.
Uh, no.
Okay.
Oh, it was.
You were, you were.
Yes.
Yeah, it's where everybody decided on.
So there is money in their current operating budget to cover this estimate, and then plus to, to pay back those funds when, probably about the middle of August or so, when the new pumper is here and functioning, and they can sell the old pumper maybe for, you know, somewhere around, you know, twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars to kind of recoup some of those funds.
See what we're at.
But that's not what was discussed.
No, we didn't talk about that.
Yeah. We talked about not using our budget money, because we have a lot of other expenditures this year.
Yeah, alright.
How long are you gonna pay for it? You gotta pay for it before you sell the truck.
You can find money for it.
Chief, when's the new truck come?
Uh, within the next month, hopefully.
Next month?
That's expected, probably gonna be a little longer.
Then we got outfit, right? That's more money.
But there's nowhere to get it from.
You've been talking to Joe.
I did. There's nowhere to get it from.
Oh.
Capital money, though.
Okay, well, then-
So, I was under the impression, they were gonna purchase it out of their budget, right? Then there was gonna be a piece of equipment sold that would hopefully reimburse, and there might be a shortfall of a little bit, right?
Right.
And that would be what we would be covering if that, that was what I got out of it. So I guess I missed it.
Yeah, there's no magic capital money there to repair this.
Either way, I think.
That's finding goods, but if we can't sell that truck and we can't guarantee that money back, then we're out that money I wrote this year.
Right.
That's my concern.
Yeah.
And almost every single air bottle we use, when we go into fires, has about expired in a couple of months. We have to replace all of them, fifty-five hundred dollars each.
How much?
Fifty-five hundred. I don't have the money to have this year. If you used the budget money, which is gonna be half my budget to fix that truck, plus seven to eight thousand dollars in tires, because we have a blown tire on it and they're all out of date, we'll take, that's over half my budget.
Can't transfer funds to November.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not clear, I've heard it was in the budget, but now we're hearing it's not.
It'll come out of their operating expenses. This, this is an unplanned expense, this repair of the truck, it was never budgeted for. Apparently, with six months remaining in the year, there's still enough money in their operating budget to cover this. But that would leave the fire department with about sixty thousand dollars left for the rest of the year in an operating budget, until you sell the pumper truck. And then that money could go back into your operating budget.
And that would be with fingers crossed the ladder, the old pumper sells, the new pumper comes on time, and then we get money back for that old pumper. It's thirty years old, national standard that that truck can't be serviced, so we have to find someone that would take that rest and put it in service. I'm sure there is someone that's willing to take it, but is it gonna happen right away? Is this ladder truck gonna get delayed till November, December? There's a lot of variables.
So, as such, we have to monitor, under the law, it's not in the budget, it would have, would entail an emergency resolution if the line item runs out of money. So we have to monitor that with the CFO.
Yeah, well, I would-
It has to be done.
I was just in Barrow Hall, and I happened to stop in, I don't, I think we're still within, within public open meetings, I think, I don't think there were too many. You were there, you were there.
There were.
There weren't.
You were completely-
So, yes.
You were fine.
So, we don't do that, try not to, ever. And what, I was, so I just stopped in, I overheard the conversation, and I think the way it ended, and that's why I'm a little in the dark, because I'm not, that's not my committee, but we're gonna, you, you, everybody agreed that it needed to be done and to try to make it happen?
Absolutely.
But at that meeting, then, there was, she was gonna, our administrator was gonna go to the CFO and try to figure out how he could get the money to pay for this thing.
And that's how we left it.
Right? That's how we left it. So apparently, this is how she came up to pay for it.
It can't come from anywhere else. It's an unbudgeted expense.
Alright, well, part of that meeting was too, that I told you, we've ate up our budget for eleven years on that truck and we're replacing. Both the apparatus are thirty years old, I mean, a lot of maintenance, a lot of work, and we've dumped tons of money, and that's why we're in the position right now, we need to buy, obviously, we've got to have to, because we haven't been able to budget for that every year, and buy X amount every year, so we weren't in a position to buy them all at once. We definitely need to get the truck fixed, there's no question about it, the town should be operating without money. We're lucky enough to have Seaside Heights up there, but we walked out of that meeting, I said, Seaside Heights are uncalled all the time. I got my truck, and we got called, and they were uncalled, with their ladder trucks somewhere else, so we can't rely on that forever. But that was where I left it, was, I don't wanna use our budget for this, because we have too many other things that we've been put to the wayside that we need to this year. And it's only gonna be a small amount that we're gonna be able to do with the budget. So if we take out that and use it on this truck, and we break down through the last year and use it for that-
Well, the mayor just made a, a suggestion, a recommendation.
What was that?
No, I think, I think we have to do it. We are, chief, right, we have to go ahead with it.
Yeah.
Just work with the CFO to monitor that line item. Come October, we may have to take some formal action.
At that point, do, there's the appropriation.
Yeah. There may be other line items to talk about, sometimes that happens.
She can look. You know?
Like an old ordinance that-
Maybe, we don't know.
I mean, she's looked at everything right now. Look again.[1487.44]
Look harder.
I don't know what.
Make something up.
I mean, can you take a loan for some, I mean, it's like an emergency. I mean, if you can't move between different forms.
Worst case scenario, if there are no other line items, but that's really a speculative. There may be other line items and there may be something we could do.
When's the last time you replaced the SCBA's?
We might be able to.
We bought Hughes after Sandy.
From other departments.
From another company.
And reallocate the fire department.
We bought thirty because we had to run out.
I thought I remember us authorizing.
Well, we purchased five last year, I think, five year last year and five year before. We still have, I think, fifteen more to go.
Can't see, you have fifteen more Scottbacks you talked about.
Done with that.
We just said fifteen.
Thirty-three bottles by this year.
But we bought ten in the past two years.
They have a hydro test date on them. And once they reach that hydro test date, they've been tested so many times, they're put out of service by law.
Five thousand dollars to refurbish that tank?
No. They can't be refurbished.
So it's five thousand dollars per tank?
Fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred per tank?
Chief, how long will it take then?
The new ones that we've run are thirty years. The last ones were ten years.
The new ones will be thirty years.
So it's nothing that anyone's going to deal with. It's been a long time.
Karen, excuse me, can we take money out of somebody else's budget and put it into fire?
Which end of the year?
You can't do it before November. We can't do it after November.
Provided there is one.
Oh yeah, won't be a problem transferring it.
So you would have to make sure that the place you were going to transfer it from knew that you were monitoring that you'd have that to customers later.
And if we really had to, we had to, we could always issue a ban or something like that. Yeah, I think that's the way, we could always issue a ban if it's before that, we're, that's true.
The state statute, the state statute allows you to appropriate up to a hundred and fifty thousand a year for a volunteer fire company. So you can always talk to your CFO, because I'm sure you didn't appropriate a hundred and fifty. Under state statute, you can appropriate up to a hundred and fifty. So maybe the CFO can find somewhere else to throw money in there. I'm just saying, it's forty-eight, fourteen, thirty-four.
Right, you got money, you can let them.
Hey, you got right on it.
Six percent?
Absolutely.
The municipality, they appropriate up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So maybe the CFO, even consult with CFO and see if there's money somewhere that can be added to their budget.
Reach out to Berkeley and ask them.
Also, reach out to Berkeley and say, I'm not contributing.
Anything else on that one? Then we'll, we'll speak to Joyce as early as tomorrow.
Yeah, let's make sure. They do give us. You're supposed to give us an annual contribution.
I haven't heard that that wasn't happening. It was the contribution for the fire truck.
Yeah, I think typically it's thirty thousand dollars in December.
In December?
Ninety-six.
Keep us abreast of where you are in your budget, so we can anticipate.
Appropriate at ninety-six thousand.
Next item is discussion of amending chapter four oh five eighteen, permit required driveways. And this is a change in personnel that's enforcement. As for the recommendation, the committee has come up a couple of times.
It came up a couple of times last year, Mayor, probably putting it on the agenda. Basically, we'd like to keep the enforcement, the code enforcer, instead of the public work supervisor throughout the ordinance. That would have to be changed. That would be for the curb and sidewalk portion of it. So then you would stand with the building department for code zoning, code enforcement. No change in fees or anything else.
So the recommendation is that Steve look at that for a future first.
Do you want to see what it says here? Code enforcement officer?
Yeah.
Worse public works.
No, we want public work supervisor to move.
That's the old, from the old days when Joe Dulcey was the concrete guy.
The ordinance, it's throughout, it's not, the whole thing wasn't printed, it's quite, it's repeated multiple times.
It goes on.
So delete public work supervisor?
Yeah.
Okay.
But the order and sewer guy's got to be made, pulled into that as well, so.
They are, when they do, when someone pulls out a mark out, they know before the building department.
He will be, right? Yeah. So that covers that.
Okay.
There you go.
They know before anyone else knows.
Because that's who's doing it now, right?
They shouldn't. They're part of it.
Yeah.
For their end, but not, the problem, Steve, the reason we keep it, the code, is there's some potential for depressed curb to be not the right size. That was the reason for the change. Enforcement for broken sidewalks and everything else. That was the reason. That's all.
Perfect. Anything else on that item? If not, the next is discussion adopting international property maintenance code book two thousand twenty-one edition?
Yes, this one's fairly simple. Instead of adopting the changes from the prior code book, we'd just like to adopt the entire code book. Maintenance code book two thousand twenty-one edition. So that is just adopting the, I think there was twelve, thirteen changes, we'd just like to adopt the entire book.
Yeah, you know what some towns do in their ordinance? They just cite, when they do their ordinance, the current year and say, this ordinance shall serve to adopt, you know, any.
By leaving it in your hands.
Any years, yeah, I saw that. I'll work on that.
You know, the book online and, yeah.
Yeah, you're better off just putting the year in and then saying, any subsequent years are here and after considered adopted. Because there's one from eighteen, there's one from fifteen.
Sixteen.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else on that issue? The next is discussion as to amending chapter one eighty-five two fees.
The fees are just to bring this in conformity with UCC, updated fees, and there were no fees prior for solar panels. The items that are highlighted in your packet are the items that were not in the book before, which is basically for solar panels, disconnect panels, and for plumbing.
So this would add those items?
Add those items.
And then it's, if prepared and then introduced, it could be introduced this evening, but it would be two twenty-three oh six?
Yes.
Okay.
Marty, does it change any other fees or increase fees or decrease fees? Or are you just adding new categories?
New categories are being added that were not, not, we, there were so many changes in personnel, they picked up that some of these items that were listed were not in our ordinance were fees to charge. Everything is highlighted. None, they were not there at all.
And is that a suggestion that Steve's office do that or finalize, or we adopt, amend it right as is with two twenty-three oh six? That as a first reading?
No, one eighty-five has to be, yeah.
Yeah, it's the numbers wrong, right?
Yeah, we have to draft, we have to draft the two twenty-two zero six ordinance and then incorporate this.
So is that, I mean, to move on and we could do that for the next meeting?
Yeah, I would say hold it off to the next.
For first reading?
Yeah. Whatever.
Yeah.
All right, so those are three in a row to work on. Anyone else on the council have any work session items? If not, we'll go into the audience, any public comments or questions on any work session items, if anyone has them, that they could give their name and address into the mic? Surely?
Brooklyn Castle seven hundred North Bay Avenue. A comment on E about the trailers and everything. I do think something needs to be done. Plus, you've got to realize, these people are parked in front of a house that they're renting, and then they also have a boat, boat to park. They're not parking somebody else's, in front of somebody else's house. It's then it's those people who know places to park. Is there any chance they can use the marina, if they're going to keep a boat, use the marina as a place to park their boat, maybe for.
We do have a, we do have a facility for that in the ordinance, at the marina.
Maybe that's a way to address some of it.
No, no, daily storage, weekly too, I think.
He's out of room.
Oh, he's out of room?
Whether there's room or not is another.
There ain't a way to rabbit around, geez, somewhere.
Mine's already filled. But I do think we need to clean up, because we are starting to look, you know, shabby. And there are things that have been sitting there for a while. And it also is hindrance to trying to pull out of a driveway or come around a corner. So I think something now has to be done, because it's lasted too long.
Applies to dumpsters too.
Dumpsters too, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that was, that was brought up a lot.
It's coming.
It's coming. Oh, good, I can't wait.
And porta potties too.
We have those around. And one other thing, just throw it in, on N Street, part of my property, why can't I have a permit to be able to park in that parking lot since I own part of it, along with every other taxpayer in this town, at night? If we need to go to the boardwalk, just bring it up again. We paid for that lot. I own part of it, they own part of it. Why can't it be available for the taxpayers if you go up to the boardwalk, get a permit and park there? Because we do own it, because you're not selling it yet. Think about it.
Thank you. Got the answer to that one?
Any other? Yes, Edie?
Meeting plan, but I know I don't even know my address anymore. As far as the, the issue about the trailers, I agree. I think added an item is too much, but I'm thinking that maybe some shorter period of time, I don't know how long it takes to get a boat ready to put in the water, or if you've got a trailer and you're packing up the contents of your house, I could see that as being, as being reasonable. Now, what that amount of time would be, two days, three days, I don't know, but, but I agree, things that are just sitting there, sitting there, sitting there, one wonders why they're just sitting there. There doesn't seem to be anything being accomplished while they're sitting there, other than taking parking away from people who, you know, clearly, parking is an issue in this town, there's no question about it. That's what I think.
Thank you. Any other public questions or comments? Yes, Chuck?
The cap will be two fifteen, ten thousand. Crowd owner of three trailers. One I paid for in the winter to have at the marina. And I pay in the summer to have the trailer down there. I think when we took over the marina, I'm the one that was up here saying, let's make sure we can have people park their trailers there at a reasonable fee to get them out of the driveways and out of people's yards, so they free up some parking. So I was on a planning board many years. Parking is a major problem, but the problem isn't there in a few boat trailers. I hear people saying aesthetics or, we live in a boat town. I mean, that's what we live in. People have boats, a lot of boats, they go out buck hunting, a buck hunt boat, a sailboat, a fishing boat, got all different types of boats, kayaks. That's what we are, I think, a lot of us are. Some people not, they just do nothing all day, sit over at Fort Worth, complain, call the police. But you want to talk about parking? How many damn houses did you allow to be built in this town with garages that you can't even put a car in? There are steps inside that keep you from being able to park a car, but that parking space is counted. It's, nothing's enforced. They have construction companies working out of people's houses with garages filled with stuff, and they're parked all over the place. I want somebody to come down and park their boat and be able to enjoy it on their vacation. When I get a house in Florida or something, I make sure there's property on the lot for my trailer, so I can park it and be safe and stuff like that. You buy a house, you rent a house, to have parking for that, and you anticipate that. So that, that's up to the person that rents the house. But if you pay a registration for your car, and I have three registrations, because the law says if you have a trailer or a car on your property, it has to be registered. If it isn't registered, then it can give you a ticket. I have registrations for all mine. That gives me to rent the parking wherever I want. Years ago, I had an RV and a boat, and I would park it on the street. It was legal. Nothing illegal about it. I would be considerate and park it, you know, in an area where it doesn't bother the neighbors. But let's, let's take care of some of these houses that are being built, like you said, Matt, that, that cover the whole lot with no extra parking. And then let's try to take and provide parking in town for people to put their trailers. Because if you could free up on the ocean block where north end of town, twenty parking spaces in people's yards that have trailers, put those trailers in the central area, even pay a nominal fee, they would want to do it, because they want to have the parking space on the property.
J Street?
J Street.
Right.
Park central.
Find some land that you can, you can.
The elimination.
Marina isn't big enough, you know, you could use some more than Marina.
Yeah.
But you're taking parking, your trailers out of people's yards, and I think they'd be happy to do it. I am, I park my big one over there.
You don't have access to the back of the houses anymore.
Right, but, you know, you want to free up around town, and people would pay the, you know, a hundred and, I think, what is it, a hundred and fifty dollars now for this one? Just keep racking it up just to park a trailer down, I think. Should be fair and reasonable, and people would do it. And, and free up, people should be able to park, if they have a house, a two family house, there should be four parking spaces on that lot usable. And we have the whale over here, they just blocked the whole driveway, and nobody parks. That, that, what is it, like five or units there?
Yeah, there's a lot, more than that, I think.
Let's enforce those things before we got against the people that live in town rollies that have had boats for years.
Any other questions or comments on the work session?
Mark Flosser, two zero seven ten. I think one week differentiates the timeframe between useful parking and using public street as personal storage. I'll throw one week out as a timeframe.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Mark. Any other public questions or comments on work session? Yes, Al?
Hello, good evening. My name is Davis Vincent, I live on Ninth Ave. I hold position as fire chief in the borough Seaside Park, and because of my position, I have been biting my tongue and staying quiet about some issues, which I no longer can keep my mouth shut about, but it's allowing someone in council to keep their mouth running. I'm here tonight to let the mayor, council, and most importantly, the borough attorney, know that Mr. Amabile has been harassing me for several months, and he threatened to, threatened me to move my boat, or he reduces power as a councilman in this town, to pass an ordinance and tell everyone in town that it was my fault. He creates ideas and lies in his head, which he begins to believe. Mr. Amabile told me on many occasions that neighbors of mine had come to him and complained about my boat, but after a few weeks of talking to everyone that lives on my block, he seemed, it seemed that everyone was in agreement that Mr. Amabile was delusional and only wanted the boat moved because he himself didn't like looking at it. A few more weeks had passed and the police chief and some officers had made business to check on the complaints Mr. Amabile had made, and it was always discovered that there was no violation, which Mr. Amabile got even more upset about. On one occasion, after spending most of my afternoon and the night at the firehouse, the chief's truck was parked in front of my boat, which I apologized to him for, and I explained to him that it was a late night and I left it there to be able to respond to emergency, and it's time and fashion, and I told him I would not do it again. He confronted me again and told him that I would move the boat off to appease him and to stop and to drop the nonsense. While walking my dog on the boardwalk a few days later, Mr. Amabile had a mental breakdown after telling me to get off the boardwalk with my dog, which I did, but then continued carrying on and grabbing every single person inside on the boardwalk and telling them that I thought I could do whatever I wanted because I was the chief of the fire department, and screamed it as I walked for three blocks while I pleaded with him to stop. I've never in my life been so embarrassed to walk the streets in the town that I love, the town I protect and the town I live in. For the last several weeks, Mr. Amabile has been grabbing anyone he knows I associate with and anyone that I will talk to him, and he drags my name through the dirt, and most recently, had been caught in front of my house, taking pictures and sharing them with members of the community. I would also like the borough attorney to know that on more than one occasion, Mr. Amabile approached me on my property, and he stupor and harassed me and made extremely disrespectful comments to me about my career position as a firefighter, stating that firemen are the only people he knows who get paid to sleep all day long. The taxpayers are so lucky to have the volunteers that serve this town and our neighbors in times of need. They are all very dedicated and trained very hard. I hope everyone thinks about how Mr. Amabile treats the civil service of this community when they go to the polls and he's on the next ballot. I've offered plenty of options to try to rectify this situation, and I know others have as well, but that is not the solution Mr. Amabile is looking for. Maybe the mayor and the rest of the council can look in the price that the borough marina is charging for storage and make it more affordable to everyone in this town. I'll leave you with all this. I got to where I am today by breaking my back and earning a good reputation in this town, and I can no longer sit around and let this man try to destroy that. I have way more important things to do than come up here and fight with him over this, to fight with him every day when he takes his morning walks, and to defend myself every time I bump into someone in this town. So I'm fighting and arguing over and with him now, and I hope he's advised not to continue this charade.
Thank you, Al. Counselor? Any other public comments or questions on work session? Alex?
Alex Congas, forty-four Seventh Avenue, Seaside Park, New Jersey, and I will state my address until they put me in a box. As long as I come up to this mic, I will state where I live and the number of my house. That's just right off the top. I want to start off by just saying that I came here tonight not because I wanted to come here tonight. I feel an obligation, I feel an obligation as an American, I feel an obligation to stick up for what I think is right, okay? It may be a difference of opinion for some other people, but I just want to say that I want to say what I have to say with all respect to the entire governing body, the borough attorney, and to my fellow residents here in Seaside Park. So, and again, I want to, I'm here to address this recent ordinance that is being proposed by, from what I understand, Councilman Amabile and Councilman DeMichael, and maybe others, but that's my understanding, that's what Ray Amabile stated to me. We tried to have a conversation, so we wouldn't all have to be here tonight, all right, to go through this and find a reasonable solution to Dennis's boat. My understanding, my trailer, that is across the street, that's parked on a state highway, registered, insured, attached, and it's attached enough that when I drive away, that trailer's coming with it. So it's attached, and it's across from the, one of the most architecturally pleasing and most beautiful buildings that I know of in OSHA County, the one that we're in. I'm saying that facetiously, okay? I planted the trees across the street to block out having to look at the firehouse. But at no time did I go and complain, did I, no time did I want to campaign to change what I already bought into. I bought into it knowing where I lived and what was, what I was up against, okay? My trailer is parked in front of the property that I own with my wife, next to our home that we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to renovate and to improve. Matt DeMichael mentioned earlier that, you know, people are coming here and spending millions. Well, we have, we have our life savings tied up in our residence, okay, here in Seaside Park, for many years, more than two decades, just at this one particular location. I will say this on a personal note about the trailer. I know it might not be the prettiest thing, but I don't think it's offensive, and I do not have it parked in front of anybody else's house except my own property, okay? So if you have to drive by and see it, it's kind of what, how it goes. Because I will say this, there's many houses in Seaside Park that I don't like the way they look. I don't like their architecture, but I am not campaigning at the planning board, okay? But I am not campaigning at the planning board, okay, or coming to the mayor council, or looking to change laws to accommodate what suits me. I bought in, in a borough town, Seaside Park, New Jersey, been here my whole life, along with many others here, okay? So I knew what I was getting into. I didn't know that I was going to be buying into an HOA, because that's the direction that the town's going, okay? Cookie cutter, sterile, no fun, no fun. Here, I got it for you. Someone in this room and myself used to joke about it, okay, but it's the truth, here, here. The no-town, no fun, okay, no fun, no fun, no fun. You're not allowed to have fun here anymore, okay? Because people, you're expecting for us to take our oats and park them at the marina, if there was room, and if it was at a reasonable cost, I would be okay with that, and I think everybody in this room would be fine with that, all right? But the fact of the matter is that there is no room at the marina. They can't, they can't take on any more than what they already have, all right? So that's why I park my boat and my trailer in front of my property, all right? And I'll also add that when my boat is not there, or my cars are not there, I welcome neighbors, visitors, D and D, fire company members, the Berkeley Striper Club, whoever can park anytime they want in front of 610, 612 Southeast Central Avenue, because that's what my property is on the tax map. I never oppose, I never try to shun people away from parking around our corner, all right? Or I should say, the corner that I live on. Anybody can park there, and they do it all summer long, they do it in the wintertime. I don't shoot people away, I don't harass them, okay? I don't threaten them. It's despicable. That's my personal thing. So now that I got that out of the way, let me move along. So let's pass this ordinance, okay? Now, now we're trying to say 8:00 PM to 0600, whatever the hours are, overnight. All right, well, that could accommodate the landscapers, that could accommodate the contractors, that could accommodate the Seaside Park yacht club who holds their regattas, okay, all summer long. The trailers are all along Baby Avenue Park. And it also can accommodate the Fourteenth Avenue ramp, which overflows, that the borough's charging eighty to a hundred dollars for the boat ramp pass, and they need a place to park, so they park along Baby Avenue, too. It accommodates them, it accommodates all of them, modifying what you're proposing, the 8:00 PM to the overnight. No trailers on the streets of the borough Seaside Park. Quite frankly, it's unconstitutional, okay? And forget about municipal court, it goes to the higher court, all right? The borough's going to lose, the borough's going to lose. So what happens when, when, once we get to that point? We're burning up taxpayers' dollars for no reason. Now, I understand people might want things to look and appear a certain way. I'm okay with that. But we're not doing it in front of anybody else's house. We're not doing it in front of anybody else's house. And if everybody wants to say that it's affecting the property values, and it's going to make the town look shabby, okay? All right, again, not the prettiest thing, but you're buying up property left and right. You own the Park Central now, all right? Put some trees around it, and let people park there, okay, and it will all be hidden. So there's, there's, there's ways to try to work this out, all right? And I'll also say that my trailer or Dennis's boat is not going to, they're not there forever. They're not there forever. I'm in a continuous work, working mode with my property. It took my wife, my wife and I twenty years to do that. I can just show up here, okay, and I have nothing against people with tons of dough, and come in and buy something, knock it down, and build a new house. It took over twenty years for my wife and I to do that. We scraped everybody we could together to do it. Go accommodate another house for our three children, children, children. Another, another no at Seaside Park is close to school, okay? You kill the town. Now you want to take the sea out of Seaside Park. You want to take the sea out of Seaside Park. No boats on Barrier Island Town, with the beautiful Atlantic Ocean on one side, the beautiful Borneo Bay on the other, okay, where you used to be able to have your boats, okay? We have a couple of lagoons here at Seaside Park, very nice and beautiful. You're going to say, when are they going to say no boats on the lagoons, because it's too crowded? Or somebody across the way doesn't like them, what about that? What are you going to do about that? You're going to accommodate, you're going to jump through the hoops for those, those complaints? Hmm, I don't think so. I don't think so, okay? So you want to take, let's just take the sea out of Seaside Park. Let's, let's eliminate it. Let's take, let's take, let's take the fun out of Seaside Park, okay? Let's take the resort, why many families came here to begin with, okay? To have a place for recreation, all right? The 125th anniversary, the family resort. No, it's the 55 and die town that I joked twenty years ago, that is, that is becoming. And that's what's being proposed here, all right? And I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and just let it happen, okay? So, that's my thing with that. And then I also heard something, Matthew, about a letter that was, how did I write it down, Matt? Okay, heartbreaking email, you got a heartbreaking email? What was heartbreaking, what did they say?
I see that, like, somehow I'm getting looped into attack. And what I had proposed from the beginning was an opportunity to come up with a solution. I didn't mention anybody's names, I didn't go into any kind of direction, I didn't even present an opportunity to say, let's change the ordinance. What I said, Alex, is I want to hear from the audience, and I want to see what it feels, because there have been multiple complaints for many years, many years. This is not like last week.
The trailers are documented.
Well, I don't know, Jen, any?
How many are documented? I want to get it documented.
Again, Alex.
How many complaints are documented?
I took a different approach than what you're presenting.
That you're claiming that, that the fire chief, Dennis Vincent, is hurting everybody's feelings. Are they documented or not?
I don't know if they're documented.
Well, you just got done telling me on Sunday, okay, you were going up one side and then down the other, saying that everybody stopped you along the way. Is that true?
This is public comment.
I'm not, okay, I'm sure.
Your comments are very genuine, heartfelt, and I'm sure everyone here is taking them into full consideration.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Alex. Any other questions, comments on work session items?
Joanne Penn, 208 K Court. I'm just wondering if there's any consideration, or has the council received any information? It's not a work session issue, but in regard to the amount of concern that there is about the younger population.
We're just here for, any questions or comments on work session items?
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you, Joanne. Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion to close the public portion and take a brief recess before we enter the. Second. Motion by Councilman Dr. Peter, second.